I forgot, it's only been a month since I've seen y'all, but. Uh, all right, well, it is kind of just a housekeeping meeting, so I'm. If no one objects, I'd like to just kind of get started here. Uh, so do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll accept the agenda.
Are there any changes? All right, great. Any, any object, any seconds or objections?
Second.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, yeah, any objections to moving forward with the agenda? Awesome, great. I know we didn't have any minutes go out for last month. I gave Tracy a little break because she was on vacation to the worst city in the world, uh, and I know how stressful that can be, so. So, uh, we will have the minutes for next month. We'll have to approve two minutes next month. Okay, great. Uh, so I'm gonna roll right on into staff. We have a few new people with us. Uh, so, um, I'm gonna start with, I guess, I see Coda here first, so I'll go with Coda. Um, hi.
Hey. How's it going, guys?
Ask that everyone who wants a non-agenda public comment, Bev McCullough, I know you wrote in, want it, so I'll uh, put you first, and then anyone wanting to speak in non-agenda public comment, please just drop it in the chat box, and then I will go through. I'll go through that list, opening it up now. Okay, Coda, the floor is yours.
Cool, awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, Coda Zeiser from Mayor Gloria's office. Uh, three quick updates from our end. I saw that Build Better SD is on your guys' agenda item for this evening. Um, so it did go to Planning Commission, uh, I believe in March. Um, and it's scheduled to come back to the Planning Commission in a few weeks. Let me just pull up the date here really quick. Uh, yeah, so it went to the Planning Commission on March 24th, and it's scheduled to be revisited on April 21st. Um, there was a, uh, public engagement opportunity hosted on March 10th by Planning Commission staff, uh, by Planning Department staff. I'll put a link in the chat so you guys can check out the YouTube video. They are still accepting public comment as well, and I believe that link closes on May 22nd. And the other item is the state of California recently, uh, gave us a grant of eighteen and a half million dollars for youth employment and youth empowerment. Um, this is over two years, um, and it can fund up to about a thousand, uh, youth positions, so ages sixteen to twenty-four. Um, it'll have us, it'll allow us to, um, recruit and pay a lot of interns, um, across all city departments. So right now, we're routing that through council, and we're hoping that, uh, by July 1, we'll have an open application that I'll blast out to you guys, so you can blast out to any students, uh, and kids you may know. Um, the last item I wanted to report out on was our, uh, sorry, guys, I lost my place here on my notes. Um, was the federal infrastructure funding that we received. Uh, last week, the mayor was in DC, uh, advocating for infrastructure homelessness, mental health issues. Um, and that with a lot of folks, um, including Pete Buttigieg, our, um, and, uh, we did receive about a hundred and seven million dollars that is coming to the San Diego region, um, and for fiscal year 2022. We have two point four million dollars for the, uh, state, for the city of San Diego that's funding four projects. Um, I'll give you guys the full list of all the, uh, different funding, uh, different projects that we'll have, um, funded, um, through this federal infrastructure bill. And if you guys remember, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act was passed, um, I think last November, and included five hundred and fifty billion dollars, um, across the entire country. Um, we got a good chunk of it. Our San Diego delegation and, uh, the county itself did an incredible job getting all of our partners, the airport, the port, MTS, Sandag, all involved to make sure that we have a robust application. Uh, we did secure some funds. So as soon as I get the list of, uh, projects that were funded, I'll send it over to you guys, so you guys can check it out. Um, that's it for me. Uh, more than happy to take any questions, and I'll put all that info in the chat as well.
Thank you, Coda. Uh, I do have a question, just along, I guess, budget hearings for city council. I know they're ongoing right now. Do you know any, um, I'm sorry, I just tried to look up the agenda, but I didn't see any specific dates for when certain segments of the budget are going to be discussed. Do you have those?
I don't have the council dates yet, but I can get those for you. Um, the budget is gonna be released next Thursday. Um, and so that's essentially where the mayor's office releases our first draft. You guys get to dice through it, the public gets to see it. Um, and then, uh, we'll do the May revise in May, which is essentially our second draft. Um, and so I'll get you guys these specific, uh, budget hearings of which departments will be presenting as soon as they're.
Awesome, thank you. You know, we have a lot of requests.
You guys do, so yeah, I'll get you guys out of both.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Kevin? You're muted, Kevin.
You're muted, Kevin.
It's more of a gripe, but I'll try to make it into a question. Um, there's been a couple, uh, pretty egregious code enforcement cases going on in the community. And I, you know, I know the development process is a real pain in the butt, but I mean, we've got guys that have been, there's one, for example, where they just dragged three huge construction trailers onto a property, you know, up on the property lines, and piped them in with sewer and are outfitting them and every, I mean, it's just completely egregious, and code enforcement takes months and months and months. I've been there for six months now. And, and by the time they get any kind of response on these things, they're already done and occupied. It, it's just, it's insane, and then, and then DSD seems to try to figure out how to accommodate the violator because they've done all this work and invested all this effort, you know, and it's, and, and it's always at the expense of the neighbors. Um, and I don't know, is that just standard operating procedure to take such a, such a long period of time? I mean, six months to even get a, um, you know, like a stop work order or something that will prohibit a, you know, a violator from proceeding with these things.
Yeah, no, it hasn't been, because I've worked on code enforcement cases that are quick, um, almost sometimes too fast. Um, and so anytime you're seeing a report, DSD has on their website a, a place where you can basically request an investigation form. If you guys are doing that and you're not seeing a follow-up, you're not seeing consistent stuff, please reach out to me, please reach out to Council District Two, um, because we can, you know, lean in on them a little bit. Um, yeah, I know that I, uh, was the Santa Cruz Avenue, uh, issue that you guys have, uh, were working with Teddy on previously. I know that one was one that was, you know, across multiple months. Um, so yeah.
That one's still.
Well, perfect, yeah, you can follow up with me on that too. Uh, but anytime you guys are seeing an egregious code enforcement or code violation that is not being acted quickly upon, please flag that for us, and we'll be in our code enforcement to take a little bit, um, you know, swift reaction on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Awesome. Anything else for Coda in the mayor's office? Questions, concern, fantastic. Uh, do we have anyone from Jen, Jen, um, Councilmember Campbell's office, her residence?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Linus, welcome.
Hi there.
Yeah.
Hi. Um, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, will you be, uh, kind of our rep moving forward? I can just continue to add you to the agenda, and if you shoot me an email, um, I'll make sure to get you these agendas as well.
Yes, um, so I will be the community representative for District Two, um, for this community moving forward. Um, just a little bit about myself. Uh, my name is Linus Smith. Uh, I recently graduated from UC San Diego. Before this, I've spent the last six months working as a management intern in District, in the District Seven office. Um, now I just started this last week, or, uh, this Monday, actually, so I don't really have a whole lot to report out to you, um, or really anything, just, you know, I'm excited to, uh, get to work with all of you, get to know all of you, and, uh, I'm always here if you need me. And I look forward to working with all of you.
Awesome, great, thanks. Um, I'm sure you'll find us to be the most pleasant community you'll ever deal with. That was not me being facetious. Anyone having questions or comments? I guess it sounds like Linus might not be able, you know, third day on the job, so maybe don't throw any hardball questions at him. Uh, but anything, uh, anyone wants, uh, him to take back to, uh, Councilmember Campbell's office for us?
I guess if he could put his email in the chat, that would be a good start.
Oh, your thing. I'll, I'll put all my contact information right there.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on down? Okay, wonderful. Uh, we are gonna go ahead. I see Cole's name just right there, so. Hi, how are you?
I'm doing okay. I hope everyone else is doing good. Uh, so I have some legislative updates tonight. Uh, first, I'm gonna start out with, uh, uh, legislation called, uh, AB twenty-one seventy-nine. This extends the state's, uh, rental protections for tenants who applied right before the March thirty-first deadline. Um, in, in that way, if they still have like a pending application with, uh, their city or their county, or wherever they live in the state, uh, they, they don't have to face eviction uh, after that March thirty-first deadline. This, uh, AB twenty-one seventy-nine was signed into law by, uh, Lieutenant Governor, uh, Eleni Kudalakis. She's currently acting governor right now while Governor Newsom's, uh, away from the state. And this marks the first time in state history that a woman has signed a piece of legislation into law, so. It's milestone achievement right there. Uh, another update that I have is with Senator Atkins Bill ten twenty-seven. Uh, this is legislation that would expand the San Diego River Conservancy. Uh, this conservancy has been around for about twenty years or so, but it would expand its jurisdiction to cover ninety percent. Uh, currently covers ninety percent of the San Diego River watershed, which extends from Julian all the way to Dog Beach. And, uh, it'll just expand it to cover a hundred percent of its jurisdiction. Uh, on top of that, too, it just changes some, uh, some technical language. It modernizes some language, too, to make it more inclusive, inclusive to, uh, the Kumii, uh, who are indigenous to, uh, the San Diego, uh, River. Uh, Kumii have lived in the community for at least ten thousand years, and, uh, under the current definition of which, uh, which members of, uh, the Kumii can even participate in this conservancy. It only, it's only limited to uh, people who are affiliated with federally recognized bands. Uh, so the, the definition would be expanded to, uh, tribal members who are affiliated with state-recognized bands, too. Um, this legislation, uh, recently passed the Natural Resources and Water Committee on a bipartisan, uh, eight-to-zero vote, and it'll be moving, uh, over to the Senate Appropriations Committee. The next piece of legislation I have an update on is a, a new bill that Senator Atkins is joint authoring with Susan Eggman. She's not the lead author on this, but she does have dual authorship. It's called Senate Bill thirteen eleven, and this is a, uh, piece of legislation that'll help our veterans, uh, it'll expand a lot of consumer protections to veterans and their families. Uh, for example, it increases civil penalties, uh, or, uh, to unfair fraudulent businesses that engage in deceptive practices to veterans. It also makes it, uh, illegal to condition a military or veteran discount. Um, so you can't like revoke a, a veteran discount if you choose to offer it, and then it also just adds additional consumer protections. Uh, there's only like a whole list of them that I could share below if anyone's interested. That bill was recently introduced. It's not planned to, uh, be heard on a committee uh, as of today, but I can keep you all updated on it, too. Uh, that's all I have for the night. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thanks, Cole. Does anyone have anything for our state senator's office?
I have a real quick one.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned evictions. I, I, I feel that word's getting used kind of loosely lately. Is that to mean basically ending somebody's lease? Um, or like the lease ends, you know, say I have a year lease on a renter, and that lease is up. Um, would that, is that the terminology you're referring to, or are you talking about actually breaking a lease?
So it would be, really a good example, that would be like if someone missed, uh, their rent, and their landlord ordered a court to send them an eviction notice, it would just suspend the, it would just allow that, that person to have protections until their rental assistance application gets processed.
Okay, thanks. That, yeah, that word gets misused a lot, but that, that makes sense.
All right. Thank you, Cole.
Of course.
Yeah, of course, anytime. So I see Rebecca Smith from Supervisor Terry Lawson Remmer's office, uh, so I'm gonna give you the floor. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, um, thanks for having me tonight. Uh, Rebecca here from Supervisor Lawson Remmer's office. Just have a couple quick announcements from the county. Um, pardon the noise in the background. I have cats that are moving around, doing some stuff. Um, so many of us are stretched thin between paying for food, rent, and other necessities. Um, addressing this is a huge priority for Supervisor Lawson Remmer. Um, last month, the county voted to approve her proposal to make the county work for all. Um, this new plan will help county staff work faster, more effectively, and more inclusively to serve the nearly one million county residents that are enrolled in self-sufficiency programs. So it rolls back the red tape that was imposed under previous county boards that blocked eligible residents from accessing food and financial assistance programs, um, such as CalFresh, Medi-Cal, CalWorks, and General Relief. Um, and because the county will become more efficient in distributing aid, our region can qualify for more state and federal funding. Um, if you're not enrolled in one of these programs yourself, odds are, um, you probably know someone that is. Uh, that's because nearly one, um, out of three people in the San Diego region are enrolled in a self-sufficiency program. Um, this was one of the first policies that Supervisor Lawson Remmer proposed when she took office last year. And thanks to the many San Diego County residents who wrote the board in support, um, San Diego County is gonna be a little bit more affordable for our neighbors in need. Um, speaking of neighbors, uh, Supervisor Lawson Remmer is partnering with County Board Chair Nathan Fletcher to create a, um, more affordable housing. Um, our offices are partnering to use surplus land as locations to build homes that are within reach, um, of low-income families. The San Diego, um, Foundation has committed to ten million dollars to support this effort, and our goal is to pave the way for ten thousand new homes. Um, lastly, I just wanted to, um, reemphasize that if you, um, run a nonprofit or a small business, and they were impacted by COVID nineteen, um, that you might be eligible for our county grant funding. Um, we have a webinar, um, tomorrow where Supervisor Lawson Remmer will explain, um, kind of the process of this. So if you're interested, I'll put that below. If you'd like to sign up, um, it's gonna be at one PM via Zoom. Um, and I'll put some more info below about the other items as well. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the supervisor's office? Okay, awesome. Uh, moving on to our assembly member. Uh, thanks for your patience, Rachel. I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. Hi.
Hi, everyone. Uh, pleasure to be with you all today. My name is Grace Gennandino, and I'm District Representative with Assemblymember Ward's office. Um, as I'm sure you know, our office is working hard on passing legislation in Sacramento. Uh, some bills that might be of interest to you are AB twenty-one twenty, which is a bill that is meant to close the funding gap to fix our local bridges. One of the closest bridges to Ocean Beach, uh, that this bill would affect is the Mission Bay Bridge, which I'm sure you all have seen, and can attest might need a little extra funding to complete. Uh, another bill that might be of interest is AB sixteen seventy-five, which is a bill meant to streamline the certification process for out-of-state teachers who are relocating, uh, because their spouses in the military. COVID nineteen has been hard on many different sectors, and education is no exception. This bill will hopefully help our milit, our schools close their workforce shortage and overall streamline this process for our military families. If you would like to see a full list of our bills, it is available on our website. Additionally, we are in budget season again, and we are taking requests from several different entities for funding. That process will be finalized at the end of April. And as always, if you are having any issues with any state-related agencies, EDD, DMV, ABC, you name your acronym, please feel free to reach out. Our office is always happy to help. And lastly, I would like to take a moment to introduce my colleague, Mickey Holmes, who is also here with me, and will be assisting me in the beach communities. Uh, Mickey will also put her contact information in the chat box for you to distribute to your community members. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Well, hello and welcome, Mickey. Nice to meet you. Does anyone have any questions for Assemblymember Ward's office? Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, a hundred percent attendance. Glad to see you guys all here. So right now, I just have Bev McCullough and Daniel Smikowski looking to make a non-agenda public comment. Again, if you are interested in making a non-agenda public comment, please raise your hands or drop it in the chat box. Okay, I see you, Mandy. Okay, so Bev, I'm gonna give you the first two minutes, since you emailed me prior to this meeting, uh, and then I will go down the list.
Thank, great, thank you, Andrea, I appreciate it. Um, when I was at the Ocean Beach, um, Town Council meeting, um, Officer Cirillo had, um, I had asked him about how we go about getting officers or something to be monitoring the traffic along Sunset Cliffs. Once you get at Narragansett and go south towards, um, uh, Point Loma, um, it's just a speedway. There's, you know, you hear people talking about it, you hear, you know, tires. Haven't had so many smashed cars recently, but little critters and whatever, and one day it's gonna be, one day it's gonna be a person, and, you know, I'm getting kind of old, and I can't run across the street, you know, it's kind of nice if people would slow down. So Officers Cirillo had, um, suggested making a request to the traffic, um, the traffic folks on their website, and I did that. And Tracy, um, had suggested coming to this board and requesting as well, so I'm, that's, that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to, however the system works or whatever, if y'all can help, um, getting that done. A traffic, you know, traffic study, or thank you, George, or whatever it is, um, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, the, um, sounds like the first thing our new newly-formed traffic subcommittee can work on. Uh, so if that interests you, please do volunteer for the traffic subcommittee.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move down to, yeah, of course, thanks, Bev. I'm gonna move down to Daniel Smikowski. Once, uh, let me just pull up my timer, and then, uh, the floor is yours.
Uh, you can take Mandy ahead of me. She's a member of your community, if you'd like. I don't mind.
Um, well, she's actually in the peninsula, so I mean, both of you are, are even, no offense, Mandy.
Well, I, I respect her too, but anyway, let me begin by mentioning I'm a candidate for District Number Two, and, um, several hours ago, I attended a meeting with, uh, city engineers. They are going to open the West Mission Bay Drive Bridge this coming October. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is why was it delayed so long? Because the contractor could not figure out how to drill. And when I brought that up before the engineers and council today, many of the council members agreed with me. They agreed. Where is the initiative? Where is the planning? That's one issue. The other issue is bicycle lanes, riding a bike. I don't know if any of you ride a bike, but I love riding my bike. I grew up with a bike. I'm a triathlete, an iron man. I sleep with my bike. But when I'm elected, I will get rid, I will get rid of seventy percent of bike lanes in this city. And I'm going against my own people, the cyclists. Why am I doing this? Because it's in the public good. It's the right thing to do. The city of San Diego has gone too far. And another thing, when I'm elected, Circulate San Diego is going to go to the graveyard. We don't need those people in our city telling us what to do at the planning group. They come to the planning group and they tell you what to do. Well, you know what? We're not gonna take it anymore.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mandy?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I do also want to announce that I am also running for city council here in the district. Um, I'm a land use advocate, an environmental activist, a mother of two, and a military spouse. I'm also a survivor of an arranged child marriage, and that traumatic experience has shown me the value of community, and it drives my desire to show up and advocate for those around me. Some of the things that I support are protecting our coastal access, maintaining our thirty-foot height limit, protecting San Diego residents from predatory housing policies, improving traffic safety and much-needed infrastructure, the conservation of our environment, as well as partnering with community groups rather than with corporations to craft up policies that impact our communities. Um, I will put my information in the chat, but I want to let you know that I'm not gonna ignore you or call you names. I will call you back. I'll put my contact information. I'd also like to announce that I'm going to be having a coffee with a candidate this Saturday in Claremont, at Claremont Coffee from nine to eleven, and I'll put that information in the chat as well. Thank you for having me. Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks, Mandy. Is there anyone else seeking to make a non-agenda public comment before we roll right in to our meeting? All the fun stuff. Okay, wonderful. Okay, so action item number one, uh, we're gonna certify our election results. So Richard, if you wouldn't mind going over them, and then if, uh, and then after we read them, you know, if there's any objections to the election, we will hear those, and then certify the results, or, uh, you know, not, and seat our new board. All right, Richard, the floor is yours.
Roger that. Okay, so the results, I'm just gonna read the results here, uh, for the, for a courtesy sake. Um, District Number One, Tracy DiSanzo. District Number Two, Stephanie Villamazur, I hope I pronounced that right, I'm sorry. Uh, District Three is Virginia Wilson. District Four, there are no candidates, so it's still open. District Five is similar. Uh, it is open. District Six, Kevin Hastings. And District Seven is Nicole Wainio. I hope I pronounced that right, too. Um, and the open election is Andrea. Any questions?
Yeah, um.
That's, that's it.
All right, um, with that, if there are, you know, no objections to the election, is there a motion to accept the results and seat all of our new board members? For maybe someone who wasn't just elected, so Craig, Tom.
I'll make a motion. It's George.
Thanks, George. Do I, thank you, Craig. Um, are there any, or, yeah, are there any objections? I'm just gonna do it that way. Okay, wonderful. Cool, welcome. Especially welcome to Stephanie, our newest member. Good to see your face. Uh, maybe we'll, we'll meet up in person one of these days. Uh, we'll see. Uh, but yeah, welcome. I, I, you know, we, we're excited to have you. Always good. Um, so moving on to the second thing, as Richard mentioned, we have, uh, oh, okay, wait, sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. So now, uh, moving on to elect the executive board. Uh, so I will go, uh, starting with Secretary. Uh, do I have any nominations, or anyone willing to be the secretary for the next year? Tracy is shaking her head.
Tracy's done with secretary position. She's got a lot on her plate. If anyone's capable of putting words onto paper.
Yeah, it's really, Tracy does a lot more than is honestly, uh, completely necessary for the secretary position. She does above and beyond a great job, but we really just need someone who, to transcribe the votes, get firsts and seconds, and maybe write a little blurb about what it was we voted on.
We used to have a roving secretary job, and I, I don't know if it really worked, but it probably gave people the appreciation for how much they blather on during a meeting and trying to keep it concise.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a full board right now, sitting here on this Zoom meeting, so that's kind of disappointing. Um, that means that, you know, not everybody here is, uh, is available to either take this role or not take this role. And so, I don't know, I mean, I, you know, like I said, last, last month, um, I am perfectly willing to keep doing the social media and, um, helping set up Zooms and stuff like that, and adminning the website. But we just need somebody who's willing to do the minutes every month, and my plate's full. I mean, I, I couldn't even get my crap together this month for this meeting, so. So anyways, if anybody is available who can do it, that would be great.
We should appoint all the people that didn't show up today.
I don't think anybody wants to take it. Can we try again next month?
Um, are you taking the minutes for this meeting?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, basically, yeah. I am, but we're also recording this meeting, so it's, you know, anybody can do it later. But yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's honestly not that hard. I've been secretary before. Um, it, it, if you just take good notes during the meeting, it takes about thirty minutes on the other end of it, so. Everyone think about it. I guess we, we can, we can postpone this vote. We can motion to postpone the secretary vote, if that makes sense, to next month when we have a fully-appointed board, an elected board present, hopefully.
I'll, I'll do it if, uh, somebody wants to, uh, be vice chair.
Yeah, unfortunately, you are the bomb at that job, so I don't know, but maybe somebody wants to be vice chair.
Yeah.
The biggest, well, we'll get to that.
Your, uh, I'll second your motion.
To move it to next month. Okay, are there any objections to that?
Oh, objection.
Oh, no objections. You're objecting? Oh, no objections. You're objecting?
Who's objecting?
No, I think Craig was saying no objections. Alright, well, let's move on then, yeah, to the position we know.
Who actually seconded that?
I think you did.
No, I first did it.
I thought I made the motion.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
Seriously, I'm in, I'm in brain, I'm in jet lag mode, so, okay.
But thank you for being here. We all really appreciate it. So we can move on to treasurer then.
I will remain as treasurer because otherwise it's a bunch of additional paperwork at the bank, so, no problem.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, do we have a second to Craig's nomination?
I'll second that. It's a tough job. Craig's the man for it.
Awesome. Alright, alright, do we have any objections to Craig remaining as treasurer? Awesome, okay, moving on to vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Kevin unless anybody wants to do it.
I do know you had some hesitance to stay in on that role last year, Kevin, so.
Yeah, my, my wife and my children mostly object to it. Uh, they're, they're not voting members here, so.
Hon- honestly, Kevin, I think if you weren't B C, you would still be overwhelmed and actively involved in the community, so. It's just, uh, it's just how you roll.
I will accept the, um, nomination if, uh, I enjoy uh, sticking my nose in the development process and holding people accountable when they break all the rules, and sticking my nose in the, in the city's, uh, process of ignoring these violations, so I will continue to do that with or without, um, the, uh, vice chair position.
I'll second that motion.
Richard, uh, are there any objections to Kevin remaining on as vice chair?
No objection.
No objection, okay. But yeah, Craig is saying no objection, not objection. Alright, wonderful. Um, and now moving on to the chair position. I always feel awkward. Tom, you're on mute.
You're still on mute. If I can unmute people. No, I can only ask to unmute. I can't unmute, so you're gonna have to figure out how to unmute yourself.
Are we looking for Garansky's?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're trying to unmute themselves right now.
Calling a Garansky's.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Tom.
I think I'm unmuted now.
You are.
Okay. I'd still like to nominate Andrea as chair. To continue as chair.
Thanks. Um, I'll happily do it.
I will, I will second that.
Thank you, guys. Are there any objections? I still, it's weird.
You still want it? You wanna keep it?
Yeah, I do, and then I was also gonna tell you guys, I did also put my name in for the CPC chair. So it's all of the community planning groups as well, so. We'll see. I promise, obviously, y'all come first. I'm just, you know, doing it to get.
It's nice to have a head at the table.
Exactly. Um, yeah, I'm just doing it so that, you know, we become more powerful. Only thing that matters, yeah. Alright, awesome. Alright, cool. So, uh, next on the agenda is appointment. So we have two seats open. Uh, and currently right now, we're still, it still says we need to get ten signatures for appointments, and, um, you know, because of the state of everything, I just wanted to ask if everyone was still comfortable with collecting those ten signatures for appointments, or if you wanted to waive the signature requirement for one more year due to the pandemic.
I would.
Like to have signatures required, because ten signatures is super minimal and not overtent at all, and I think the minimal act and effort of getting ten signatures would demonstrate some good faith that somebody really wants to actually be on the board.
Um, so I'd like to just offer a little bit of a counter to that, Craig, that, you know, we actually didn't require signatures from people who were running for the board this year or last year. And there are people who ran for seats this year, who did not get those seats this year. And now we're asking them once again, what, now to get signatures when they didn't have to get signatures when they ran for the board. So, at this point, it's kind of like, I just, I, I feel like I know the signatures are valuable, but since we didn't even require them to ask for, or to get signatures to run for an open seat, it seems kind of ridiculous to ask them to now go out and get ten signatures, to get appointed to a seat that they may or may not get to keep next, next time they run. Because they're being appointed into a vacancy and not necessarily the seat that is, that is their seat. Does that make sense?
It does, and that, that's, that's compelling argument.
Yeah.
And, uh, I suppose that, uh, we'll find out if there are people who are ready to step up. Yeah, let them, let's fill those seats.
Just for this year.
Yeah, I think by next year, we, I think we'll feel pretty comfortable, um, going back out there and talking to our neighbors. Um, okay, great. So can I get a motion then?
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion to, um, suspend the signature requirements for updates for this election year.
I second it.
Thank you, Chris. Um, are there any objections?
No objection.
No objection. Okay, cool. I know we're, we're just, I, it, I know, just housekeeping, guys. Okay, so now, um, moving on to committees. So our first are, the only committee on our bylaws, most importantly, it's the project review committee. Um, so, uh, Kevin, how many people are you looking for, for this committee?
Um, five people is a good number.
Do we have five or less volunteers to be on the project review committee? Chris, George, Stephanie. Kevin, that's four. Do you care about an even number or an odd number?
I hate even numbers because it's harder to make a quorum of.
Yeah, um, so who was typically on it? Tom and Craig, right? Would either of you be interested?
Last year was also Richard. Craig's been on it before.
Okay.
Let's see. Stephanie, I'm trying to put initials here. Um, I mean, I, I can get by with four, but we may have, we, we gotta be on point with our attendance.
It is just every other month, or we're trying, because it's, I, I think, I don't know, Kevin, projects are coming in kind of slowly.
It, it depends. Um, so our, our typical schedules every other month, but half the time, the in-between months have meetings as well. Because we can't always wait two months to see a project. So if we have, uh, four people, uh, three of us have to be present to have a forum.
So Kevin, we have you, Tom, Chris, and Richard so far?
Who's absent today?
Newman and Nicole.
Um, no, the P R C so far that Andrea said was me, Chris, George, and Stephanie.
Oh, gosh, George, Chris, and Stephanie?
I would miss, uh, Richard's, um, feedback though, but I won't force him.
Uh, for what? I'd still like to be on that.
Project review committee. Are you interested in that?
Yes, I'd like to still be on that.
Alright.
That's five.
Wonderful. Okay, can I get?
Kevin, George, Chris, Stephanie, and Richard.
Yes.
Did we miss anyone? Alright.
Alright, and of course, you, everyone is still welcome to go, uh, to those meetings. They will be open to the public. Uh, so can I get a motion to approve that committee?
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Do I have any objections to that? Okay, cool. So we're gonna move on. Uh, obvious, I, I think there's two more committees that we typically keep, uh, the traffic subcommittee. I know there's lots of interest in that. Uh, w- we do wanna keep it to Ocean Beach residents this year. Just by request of other board members, so, uh, I guess, you know, five or three is a good number. Uh, Tracy, I know you wanted to step down as secretary. Are you also entrusted in being on the transportation? You can still be on the transportation committee, and then we'll elect our own board in that.
Yeah, I'm still interested in staying on. I, I'm, I'm still interested in staying on the transportation subcommittee, but, um, I, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll discuss it at the, the next meeting. Alright, uh, is Bev here? Does Bev want it? Because we are, you know, if you, we do have community member spots as well on that transportation committee board. Uh, would you be interested in fully serving on it, Bev, or do you, or would you just like to come and present to it?
She's not here right now. I'll have to check with her later.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I'm still interested in being on that committee, and maybe if we could get then one other member.
Andrea, how often do you reckon that's gonna meet?
Every other month.
It's supposed to meet every other month, but we really haven't had a lot to talk about lately, so, I mean, we have kind of a running list of things that we wanna talk about, but, um, it's just been, it's not been happening, so, but it should. And if somebody wants to chair that transportation subcommittee and get the ball rolling again, that would be great.
I'm not interested in chairing, but I am interested in being on, on that committee. Um, I'm really concerned with, uh, all the, all the traffic issues that I see around, uh, the central business district, which are totally out of hand, and it seems like the city is, uh, totally tone deaf in dealing with those things.
Craig, it would be awesome to have you on this committee. So that's three of us.
I'd be happy to join, but I don't know how much attendance I can commit to. You know, I've attended them probably half the time.
If we could, if we could keep like three board members and add a community member or two, that would be really great. Um, you know, we've got, we have to have a three, a, a two to one or three to one ratio. So if we have three board members, we have to have, um, one to two community members.
We should do some advertising on that. I think the committees are a fantastic opportunity for people to kind of dip their toes in the water without having to commit to be on the, on the board. Um, and obviously, they have to be appointed by the, by the full board, though.
Yeah. Laura, are you interested? No? Okay.
Bev said she would do it.
Oh, awesome. So Bev will be on, okay. So that we have four people. Um, it's always good to have a, a, an odd number, but we can, uh, we can try to establish that next time.
Yeah.
If, if you want an odd number, you can put me on there.
Kevin wants his motorcycle parking.
Um, we all want motorcycle parking for everyone. Alright, so we've got, um, me, Andrea, Craig, Kevin, and Bev McCullough.
Don't tell my wife.
Alright, I'll, um, I'll motion to accept those members.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Yeah, I think, um, because Anthony and Nicole aren't here, and I know they're super big parks people, I think, uh, just pushing that maybe to next meeting.
Do you want a mo- motion to hold that until next meeting?
Uh, I, I, I mean, it's an open-ended committee, so I'm just gonna.
Cool.
Oh, Susan Booth also wants to be on the transportation committee.
Awesome, Susan.
Can she take my spot? Five, it's easier for quorum, and I will.
She can. She can, absolutely, because then we'll have three board members and two community members, so that's great. And Susan may.
Speaking, we already voted on that, though. Um, did you guys miss a hand? I, I officially resigned from this transportation committee.
Alright, can we just confirm and then we'll vote again?
Uh, one sec, uh, resigns. Okay, um, and then, you know, I, I think Susan wanted to try to go for an appointment, so she might actually be a board member soon-ish, maybe.
Well, that would still help the ratio, so.
Yeah. Um, okay, so I have me, Andrea, Craig, Bev McCullough, and Susan Booth. But we're gonna hold on making a final determination until next month?
No, I was saying for the parks. Sorry, I was.
Oh, parks, okay.
Transportation was already voted on.
Transport.
Well, I mean, we'd have to add Susan, I guess, next month. Sorry.
Who, sorry, scroll that back, because I didn't hear a motion for transportation? Who turn, who motion?
Um, well, I kinda, I motioned to accept those five people. Then George accepted the motion, but we did not vote.
Oh, well, there you go. We didn't vote.
Alright, so everyone, so everyone vote no on that then, yeah? Vote no. Alright, and so, let's make a new motion, sorry.
Okay, and then I'm gonna put Kevin Hastings, no. And then, we're gonna do one sec.
Secretary job is super easy, again.
Alright, so I removed Kevin. And now I will first that motion again. Who, who wants to second?
I'll second that.
Kevin will second. Okay, anybody oppose?
Answers to that. Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, moving along.
For parks, did we do a motion on parks?
Um, oh, yeah, Nicole's here. Nicole?
Hey, Nicole, when did you get here?
Hey, just now.
Okay.
Um, are you interested in still heading up a park subcommittee?
If the board sees the need for a park subcommittee still, I would be happy to.
Yeah. Well, do we have any interest in joining? Anyone, Virginia? It looks like you're. Uh, is there any interest in, um, anyone being on a park subcommittee?
Yeah, I can do it.
I'll sign up for that, and, um, uh, yeah, I think it, I think it deserves a standing committee. You know, if, if there's nothing to talk about, we can just table the meeting. It's not a big deal.
Awesome. Okay, so we have three.
So, Virginia said she didn't wanna do it?
Um, I don't know. She didn't unmute herself. I thought she was moving to unmute herself. Oh.
Thumbs up or thumbs down, Virginia? Thumbs up? Alright, so right now I have Nicole, myself, Kevin, and Virginia. Is that it? Okey dokey.
Alright, can I get a motion to accept, um, the park subcommittee?
I'll motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Do I have any objections? Okay, awesome. Um, there is actually one more spot I do have to appoint. Uh, we need a representative to the airport noise advisory committee. Uh, Anthony is termed out regardless of whether he's on the board or not, so does anyone want to be our representative there? It is a voting position.
I have no idea what that whole thing entails. Too bad my husband can't do it.
Yeah.
I'll do it. I did two years of it.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, um, I will motion to accept Tom as our representative to NACAC.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have any objections?
Have to, have to send a letter to those people.
Yeah, exactly. That's why we gotta vote on it. Okay, seeing no objections, I will go ahead and write letter for Tom. To NACAC. Cool, thanks. Okay, cool. So moving on to Build, uh, Build Better S D. It's one of the, um, it's, it goes hand in hand with the. it's, it goes hand in hand with the mobility packages that we reviewed and the housing for all and the parks for all packages. And it's a restructuring of the DIF funds that the city gets paid. So instead of them keeping them community by community, they're putting them into an overall city fund. And then we'll prioritize based on city assets and what, I guess, will provide the most benefit excuse me, to the most amount of San Diegoans. And that's, I was taking notes, and actually the words in the, let me see. I quoted it. So they I'm sorry, they want to equitably distribute the DIF funds to serve the most amount of people. And it's oriented around that, about what projects will benefit greater San Diegoans. So it's, it's more about, so now our CIP projects are all classified as community projects, and they're going to go through and reclassify based on city assets. And what, again, will be the most beneficial. They're also restructuring the fees, so it's not just based on what type of development you're doing. It's also going to now be based on the size of development. So larger development, the larger DIF fees. They're also moving back the timetable of when these will be paid. So it will now be paid before the final inspection. And the DIF fees won't be due on the first inspection as now. And they, there is also language in there to create advanced infrastructure financing districts, which would, which would, I guess, replace the current structure of DIF funds and keep them in those enhanced finance, infrastructure financing districts. So, um, like most legislation, you know, there's good and bad things. I, I don't necessarily find that the, I think there's some projects currently in our CIP list that have a good chance of getting funded sooner through this. I think there's a good, yeah, I think there's a good chance that if we start lobbying now that we could get the peer classified as an important city asset, as well as the lifeguard station. Because those do benefit the most amount of people and count as, you know, park infrastructure and park space. My big complaint is just, they're still keeping the exemption of DIF fees. So some certain developments are still exempt from DIF fees. And I think everyone, and old, I think old development should pay DIF fees. Kevin, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, my understanding is this has been presented as a sort of social equity correction that some neighborhoods benefit from DIF fees that maybe don't deserve them or are better off or at the expense of, you know, ghetto neighborhoods that are lacking in infrastructure improvements. And so the, the impetus behind this is to use the Climate Equity Index, which is sort of an interesting thing if you read up on it. And it goes into the communities of concern, you've referred to that term. So the Climate Equity Index, it looks at a lot of different variables like demographics, access to opportunity, kind of very nebulous stuff. I mean, there's asthma rates in there. There's all kinds of stuff. And so it uses that to basically say, this is how we're going to prioritize projects. Rather than, you know, use the funds in that community, which is how it's been done since I can remember. So on the communities of concern, on the Climate Equity Index, and it includes effects of like sea level rise, there's all kinds of stuff in there. It looks sort of like a just social justice mashed potatoes to me, where they can kind of put everything into a fungible fund and really do whatever they want with it. But as far as the communities of concern, we're a community of not of concern. We are in the category, like the top of the four categories of, of not concerned. So that's not encouraging for me, because the DIF fees are supposed to be used to deal with, you know, failing infrastructure. And we're an old, built out community. We have a lot of failing infrastructure. We don't have a lot of DIF fees coming in. Because most of our projects frankly are companion units, which are exempt from DIF fees. So it would really be at the blessing of the mayor that we would get more of these fees. Otherwise, it seems unlikely based on how the law is, is written, if you actually follow it. But it's, it's very subjective. So I don't know what to do with this. It, this, I mean, they're gonna pass it regardless.
Right.
That's a fact. They don't, you know, they don't, they don't ask us for input before they vote on this stuff. But I, I think, I think what we need to address is this, what this leaves out is that the failing infrastructure is not necessarily going to correlate with neighborhoods that have high asthma rates or a lack of, you know, a high unemployment or, or poverty rate. That's not necessarily the case. You know, you have older neighborhoods that just have failing infrastructure. We have storm drains that don't work, our peers falling apart. You know, we have parks that are severely lacking in amenities and maintenance. So if, there's gotta be some kind of I guess motive in there to, to keep in mind those aging communities. You know, we still need walkable sidewalks and passable roads.
Right. And I have the same read as Kevin. I think, you know, it's naive of us to assume that this won't be passed. We know how things happen. So I'd like to lobby in the most effective way possible to get, like Kevin's saying, our aging communities also highly prioritized. So it's not just centered around these communities of concern and really drive home the point of city assets. And making sure that assets that serve the greater community and not just one community are highly prioritized. And it's funny that you brought up asthma, because people who live in flight paths like us are more likely to have asthma. So, yeah, those are just my thoughts. And yeah, like Kevin said, I think this is gonna get passed either way. So we should craft a motion that obviously benefits our failing infrastructure projects and what we wanna see. So I would generally, you know, want, want us to take a strong stand on how they're prioritizing these DIF fees. And I'd also like to throw in there that it's a little bit BS that any development is exempt from DIF fees. Virginia?
Okay, that, but my take on it is that it is kind of a social justice motivated proposal. And it's getting away from the, the purpose of the development impact fees. They may need to change the name of them, but they should be, I think, concentrating on charging the fees where they're needed. For example, not exempting certain developments. And then they should be applied where the impact is felt. When a new development goes into a community, it affects the immediate area and the residents all around it. And the funds should be used to mitigate that impact.
Yeah, but the city doesn't care. They're not, that's the old policy and they're not gonna do that.
Right. And well, and I think a lot of the urbanized areas too, that have become communities of concern are also the ones being impacted by waived DIF fees. So I, I just, you know, I think that's a good stance to take. And then I think also making sure that there is an established hi, I don't wanna say hierarchy, or just an established framework in the language of how they're going to prioritize the CIPs. And what classifies a city asset, as, because the language right now is, like Kevin was saying, kind of flowery and not really direct. It has things about, you know, oriented to benefit, you know, families and children oriented where, you know, the most, the most benefit will be felt to citywide people. And I find that our beach is one of the most accessible ones. We do have, you know, the bus routes that come right down to Newport. As, and it, you know, is 10 minutes away from Old Town and all the trolley stations, when it's a little bit harder to now connect into PB and La Jolla. And I, I just think there's some leverage here if we ask in the right way, you know?
I don't know what would sway them. I mean, it needs to be devoted based on need, not based on income levels or asthma rates, you know, it needs to be based on the infrastructure needs. If that needs to be a citywide fund, then so be it, but
Right.
You know, these guys wanna pat themselves on the back and sound like social justice warriors is what this comes down to. It's not a wise policy at all. I, maybe some language that sort of emphasizes aging infrastructure needs and I don't know, and, and obviously collecting DIF fees on more projects. I don't know, you know, what's exempt. These are affordable housing is probably exempt from that. Affordable housing is probably the only thing that maybe shouldn't be exempt, was deed restricted housing.
Right, yeah.
I don't know if it is.
So yeah, so setting up, I guess, a prioritization framework that starts with, you know, maybe the last time that infrastructure was updated. So like the oldest infrastructure can get attention first and then using, you know, their language as well, the most aged infrastructure with the largest community or the largest citywide impact.
I'm not sure that's gonna totally work in our favor. Because there's, it's so funny to see my picture on, on your thing. Anyways, I don't, I'm not sure if stating like aging infrastructure is gonna help us because there are a number of communities of concern that were built a long time ago and their infrastructure is aging as well. And they need serious upgrades. So I, I don't think we could or should include like the aging infrastructure as prominently in a motion. Just because I think that that could backfire on us as well.
There's nothing good in this for OB. I, I mean, we can at least advocate for, for collecting more DIF fees. There's, there's nothing prohibiting them collecting DIF fees on companion units. And you know, these aren't affordable. You know, these aren't solving the housing crisis. I mean, these are high end roof decks, you know, above market. Nothing affordable about these. I don't know why they're giving rebates for people to build these things.
Especially with the rate at which property value is increasing. I don't think, I don't, you know, I don't think DIF fees are gonna keep people from building ADUs either way. And our, obviously, infrastructure is, all over the city is severely underfunded.
Coastal fees, on the other hand, are total waste on some of these projects. I don't even know where those things go.
Laura? You're still muted.
It is, yeah, there it is. I, I listened to that presentation that they had twice. And I, I agree with you, Kevin. It really is aimed towards social realignment or I think one thing that could help, I think there's a misconception, and I discovered this with the library people about Ocean Beach. If you go on to the website called city-data.com, you can see that 75% of the Ocean Beach people rent. There's a huge bimodal population. We have a lot of wealthy people, but we have a lot of poor people and not poor, yeah, well, poor. And very few middle class. And I think including some statistics like that might be really helpful, because I think there is a terrible perception that we're all just wealthy beach, you know, bums, rich beach bums.
Yeah, the, the people who own our properties are.
Got that, right?
Yes, people who rent our properties.
I know.
The properties are not.
Well, citydata.com has incomes, I mean, it has everything. How many people speak a different language, what kind of jobs they have. And it, we do have a bimodal population. We have a huge population, just to, I mean, I know this from the library, volunteering at the library, that does not have internet even. And we have one of the busiest groups of computers in the whole city. And that's because there's a large group of people that don't have computers and don't have the internet. And you can see that on the citydata.com, that there is a huge group of Ocean Beach people that really don't have a lot of money. I mean, my neighbor, she has, she makes 1,300 a month. You know, she's, the landlord is being kind to her, but she's more representative. She's representative of a lot of people, that especially that I see amusing the library. But we may be looking at some of that city data and including it. I know it helped us with the central library people.
Yeah, Mandy, but that is interesting, Laura. It may be asking, requesting to include in the prioritization framework, you know, percentage of renters living versus percentages of, you know, owners who are residing in their neighborhood. Sorry, Mandy?
Yeah, and Ocean Beach is a Title I school. I believe the numbers are about 41% of those families qualify and meet the threshold for Title I, which is a low income school. But another thought I had with regards to infrastructure, you know, we do, as a coastal community, do get a lot of visitors. Is there an opportunity to maybe classify that? Being an older established neighborhood, we are supporting the city with coastal access to and from. That could maybe help with the Build Back Better, you know, to the prioritization criteria for our neighborhoods. So that's my only recommendation. Thank you.
Mindy? I have a question for Mindy. I know we lost the Title I designation a couple of years ago. Did we get it back?
Uh, no, they never lost it. You know, they were in fear of losing it right before, the year before the pandemic struck. And then the pandemic struck, and then I believe the numbers went up to 51 or a little over 50%. But that's kind of hyper corrected as the economy's rebounded and people are going back to work. And so the last it was at was at, I believe, 41% was the number.
That's definitely something that ought to be included in whatever proposal.
And I know that like even in Cabrillo and Dewey are both also Title I schools as well. So those, you know, you know, that narrative that coastal communities don't have people who, who are low income is a fallacy.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I think both Pacific Beach and Ocean Beach have some of the highest levels of naturally occurring affordable housing as well. Which could also, which should also be maybe considered in a prioritization framework. Nicole, you've had your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. I do agree that the narrative about Ocean Beach doesn't necessarily reflect the reality of the community. But I don't think that this is the time to try and like re-educate the city by putting out data points on our income levels and that type of thing. I mean, they must already have that data and be well aware of it. One question I had for, for the board was, sorry, let's see. What would be the reasoning behind encouraging the collection of more DIF fees for ADU units when we're fairly certain that they won't be spent in Ocean Beach or in any of the coastal communities under the new plan? It seems I don't know, just sort of incompatible with, with the state's goals for housing and, you know, I just don't see the reason behind asking them to charge more in DIF fees if we're not gonna benefit from that in any way. Thoughts?
That's a good point. I don't know, I just, I just feel like we're, we're just here for developers to take advantage. I don't see this happening in other older neighborhoods where people are where people are knocking down old, you know, naturally affordable housing to just overbuild everything and build 30 foot high units on the setback or on the on the property line even. So I just, it's a benefit. I don't understand the point of the benefit because it's not providing affordable housing. So we have plenty of market rate housing. And whether or not the diff funds go back into our beach or not, I think they should be paid on those projects. And we at least need to get the conversation started on that.
Yeah, if it is all going into one central pool, the bigger pool, the more resources to go around and the more funding opportunities for everything. So if, you know, if we are a little bit lower on the prioritization framework, then the more money we have in, you know, the quicker we will move up because other things are getting built and paid for.
Yeah, I mean, that was my thought too, is the more money that the city has, the more potential there is to spread the money, you know, elsewhere, but yeah, I, I mean, it's like.
Honestly, sorry, Tracy, I just don't see that happening.
Yeah. And if we, if we start looking at the things that we can try to include in our motion that would help OB, we can't really use aging infrastructure because, like I said, a lot of communities of concern are do have aging infrastructure issues. The best data is basically to look at, you know, income levels of communities, but the city isn't gonna do that. They're, they're not. So I mean, I don't even know what statistics we can ask them to look at that would help to channel money to Ocean Beach, you know? Or even statistics that they would want to look at. Because all they see right now is social justice. They don't necessarily see like income and, you know, they're just looking at, they're looking at racial disparity and stuff like that. So that's what they're looking at right now. They're not necessarily looking at income disparity as the sole motivation for this. They're looking at, you know, trying to balance the scales of racial, racial. Oh, my God, my brain just, you guys know what I mean? Like my brain just turned off.
Historical oppression, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. So they're trying to balance the scales of that. And yes, those, those particular demographics have had financial discrepancies and financial differences. But it's not just looking at that. It's looking at just, you know, racial discrepancies over systemic long periods. So they're not going to really care so much that Ocean Beach is 75% renters and we all, you know, a lot of us live paycheck to paycheck. They're not going to care about that. So it's like what? Yeah. So what is it? What is it that can, what are the types of statistics that they can look at or we can ask them to look at? That would be meaningful to them and make an impact. And I mean, aging infrastructure is definitely important, but I don't, I don't know if they're gonna. I don't know. This, this whole thing is a cluster, if you ask me. It just keeps getting worse and worse and worse.
My map here, by the way, shows the climate equity index. And the darker the green is, the more, I guess, affluent the neighborhood is considered and the lower it would be ranked on that scale. So obviously, it's pretty much everything south of the 94. And then you get kind of south of the eight. It's, you know, most of that. And then OB is very dark green because we're all filthy rich people here and we don't need any infrastructure. And then there's North County as well. So that's, that's kind of a map you're looking at there. It's, it's not very encouraging.
Right.
I'm, I'm at a loss. I don't, I don't even know. It's just, it's so frustrating and, you know, we, every single year, you know, we ask for the same damn things, you know, fix our sewers, fix our library, fix our pier, you know, fix our lifeguard station, like all of this shit that's just crumbling into the ocean right now. And like all they look at is the fact that there's a bunch of, you know, white people that, you know, have potential to have money. I mean, I don't even know what they're looking at. Like, it's just, I, I don't know. I, I don't know. It's frustrating. And I understand, I understand systemic racism and the fact that, you know, people in the South County have not benefited from developer impact fees and stuff like that over the, over the years, but now there is building, there's building all over the city, right? So they should be getting development, DIF, you know, diff fees, and we should be getting diff fees and everybody should be getting these diff fees and they're not. So now, because they've made all these rules about diff fees and the places that need them aren't getting them, now all the money that is coming in is going to go to these other places. And it's such a, I mean, if you talk about inequity of funding, I mean, this is, this is like, it's top debt. I don't know. I'm just, my jet lag is talking. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just like starting to get kind of angry about everything and I just really don't even know what to do. I don't even know what kind of a motion to make for this.
It's just a money grab to put everything in, in a control of people to do whatever they want with it is what it ultimately is. I'm trying to take motion here.
Good luck.
Right. So I mean, another part of this piece of legislation that kind of stuck out to me was that they would come up with a CIP budget and prioritization framework each year. So, you know, we could ask that that be you know, the, the discrepancy of the city council as opposed to the discrepancy of the mayor. I know it's a strong mayor format of government, so might not be something we could ask, but at least then if they are reprioritizing, reprioritizing the CIPs every year, going through the annual budget process, there at least gives us a chance of, you know, lobbying efforts to continue to keep peer and our lifeguard station at the top of mind, you know, I, I really feel for our lifeguards. They put their lives at risk every day and they risk injury pretty much every time they set foot in their workplace. And, you know, they don't only save obesions when you jump off the arch. They save everyone. So I think just asking that high priority be given to assets that are highly utilized by, you know, the entire city would be a good starting point.
I, yeah, I was, I'm trying to type something on that. So projects that provide a citywide benefit.
I don't know how to phrase this, but it seems to me that the one thing the social justice warriors have forgotten is that places like the beach areas are revenue generators through tourist dollars that provide the resources for all this wonderful distribution redistribution they want to do and that is there a way to include that in whatever we're giving the city to help them to remember that the pier and the lifeguard station? Both are things that are part of attracting tourists and their dollars to San Diego.
And they're also free and accessible to and easily accessible to all San Diegans by public transport as well as, you know, the fact that we have free parking everywhere in Ocean Beach.
Well, there's that, but also that, that, you know, I mean, with, with all due respect to the, to the, to the, to the, to the racially and culturally oppressed. The racially and culturally oppressed neighborhoods don't generate significant tourist dollars and revenue coming into the community, into the city. I'm not sure with if within.
Barry Logan's become.
Yeah, I was gonna say Barney Logan's kind of up there with, with a community of, of culture. Yeah.
Is it, is Barry Logan now a, a revenue generator for the city?
I'm not so sure it's a revenue.
Beach areas.
Tourism, it's a tourism.
As a cultural, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, people aren't driving to San Ysidro to hang out for the day, I think is what Craig's point is. Whereas people from areas like that come to OB.
Yeah.
From infrastructure and OB, I shit, I, people that live in East County probably enjoy the pier more than I do these days.
Right. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you want to, you know, phrase that, but I think that's something that needs to be on the city's radar that they don't forget that, you know, all these wonderful things they want to do need money and the beach areas generate money.
Why, I think highly emphasizing use.
Why don't we just put in a toll, a toll road? Why don't we just put in a toll road at the end of the eight and then any of that money that comes in can be used for OB only?
That's right.
Yeah, that, that will go across real well. I'm typing some up here that.
We, right at sunset times too. So everyone using the eight to leave after sunset.
Yeah.
To be to get out.
They get, we, we charge them more money to come in at like, you know, five o'clock. No, 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 nevermind.
Hey, I mean, that's how DC public transportation works. They have peak hours and when you use that, you get charged more and going off peak hours. You don't.
Yep. Isn't that how our HOV lanes work too? I think the HOV lanes work that way too. Yep.
Let me, let me try a motion here.
Have permit, just like permit parking, permit entry.
So we digress.
We'll charge you based on your income.
Hey, I mean, that's not bad. That's not a bad idea.
Do you, can you type that? Can you put that motion in the chat? Or your motion idea in the chat?
Not really, because I'm on my computer and I'm zooming on my phone.
Okay, well, then you're gonna have to give me a moment to type it.
Let me try to spit it out and get it in everyone's head first. The city needs to continue to prioritize diff spending based on in part on infrastructure condition and amenities that benefit the region, including citizens that live in communities of concern. Period. These projects are not necessarily located in those communities, but serve those communities. Sorry, that's the best I can come up with right now.
That's pretty well articulated.
Something like that. Basically, just, I don't know, we're clinging to anything here. None of this is good for OB.
I think that's well articulated.
Okay, Kevin, what did you, I, I don't.
Yeah, can you put in the chat?
Yeah, because I, I can't, I didn't type that fast enough, so I don't even know what you said. So prioritize.
Let me try to put it in my phone here. I, my computer is too weak to zoom on.
Or you can type, type it to me or text it to me and I'll put it in the chat?
I'm gonna type it on my phone. I might as well just clear it in chat.
Okay. I'm super hungry, people.
I mean, this is kind of a waste of time anyways, because I don't know what to do. How many more action items do we have?
Virtual meetings and then that's it. Virtual meetings versus in person. I could totally go for some Mexican food. I got no Mexican food in Paris. None.
Maybe that's a Mexican restaurant in Paris.
There was, there was a Mexican restaurant in Paris and it was called O Tacos. I was a little afraid.
O Tacos.
O Tacos.
Sounds very like an Irish Mexican restaurant.
Yeah. Not my bag. Come on, Gavin.
It's benefiting.
Public? Is that what you're going for? The projects that most benefit the public?
Almost done here.
Or have, yeah, the highest.
Is it the public?
Public use. But.
Like benefit?
Looking to benefit, that benefit people who.
Language is what's in the ordinance.
So the city should continue to, oops. The city should continue to prioritize diff spending based in part on infrastructure condition and amenities that serve residents from all over the city, including those from communities of concern. Needs benefiting historically underrepresented residents are not necessarily located in those communities. What Susan got going on here?
Yeah, I'd say the demographic of people fishing.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, you know, something like specifically the Ocean Beach fishing pier provides both recreational opportunity to, for residents throughout the city as well as, I mean, would you consider that to be like subsistence fishing? I mean, there are people actually who feed their family fish they caught with, you know, there are people who feed their family fish they catch on the pier.
That definitely is. What, what I see a lot of down there is people fishing and taking fish home to feed their families. So I think that's an important point.
I don't know, would the diff fees even go to the pier though?
Well, I have, I actually, you know, the more I think about this, if we're going to, you know, kind of lobby our D two office, our state council office to help push this through, I think it would even be beneficial to call out specific projects that we think would require, you know, this kind of prioritization. Otherwise, it will get pushed down the diff, the diff funding to make our case stronger as opposed to kind of a blanket statement. I mean, we aren't just lobbying our one particular office to kind of fight for this.
Andrea, that is a really good point on the pier that I think we should mention it in the motion that, that it provides
Yeah.
subsistence fishing to members of.
Yeah. And I think Susan's point too of collecting statistics, that doesn't necessarily have to be in the motion, but I'd be happy to add it to, you know, whatever letter I end up crafting.
I mean, the library obviously serves, well, it doesn't serve anyone now. It's supposed, it historically has served people that are low income, a large, a large percentage. So.
Unhoused.
Yeah, you know, are those people of concern or, or not? Because they're living in the dark green part of the map in a, in a cardboard box.
But the library isn't gonna serve people, like you said, it's not gonna serve people from all over the city. So we really can't include that in the list of amenities that serve people all over the city. If you're gonna do that, we definitely need to have like two categories of, of like crumbling infrastructures that serve the local community, but also crumbling infrastructures that serve the city as a whole.
Yeah.
Just thinking of the wording of maybe the letter, how I could start it out with would be, you know, the Ocean Beach Planning Board has grave concerns that two widely used city infrastructure projects, the pier and the lifeguard station will get pushed lower on the CIP priority list under this build back better. And we encourage all, you know, the city council to keep that in mind when creating the prioritization framework that there are still highly utilized infrastructures, you know, outside of communities of concern that do benefit all stratus of the income levels in San Diego. You know, outside of communities of concern that do benefit all stratus of the income levels in San Diego.
Yeah, I mean, I think that what Kevin wrote up, like if he if he was gonna claim this as as his motion. Would be a good motion to have, but then in your letter, you can explain it a little bit more. You know, we don't have to call out each individual item in our motion.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So Kevin, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna?
I'm tweaking it right now.
Okay.
I think Andrea just nailed it. If you play that back and type it in, that's beautiful.
Well, that's for her letter.
All, yeah, I'll definitely make that. The opening paragraph and then we can include like the specific motion. That would actually be passable as ordinance language. You know, as the next paragraph and then finish it up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your your politeness.
Thank you for your consideration.
Please and thank you go a long ways.
Yeah.
All right, here's a part of it. I'm adding a thing about the pier as well. Our fishing pier.
That's the San Diego fishing pier, by the way.
That's right. This is San Diego Municipal Fishing Pier.
That's not the Ocean Beach Pier. That's the San Diego Fishing Pier.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
Or was your word subs- subsidence?
Yeah, provides subsistence fishing.
Subs- substitution.
Subsistence fishing utilized by mem- by members of. What what's the what's the code? What's the code where historically disadvantaged communities or whatever, you know?
Communities, communities of concern.
Communities, okay. Yeah, subsistence fishing engage in by members of communities of concern. In order to feed their families.
I'm just gonna say minorities to get right to the damn point here.
Yeah, but isn't that we have to use.
Yeah, I wanna, I prefer to, yeah, use the city's own language, you know, yeah.
Their code language. All right, well, do you think you can amend part of that?
All right, so are these two paragraphs your motion?
Yes. Boy, the friendly amendment to change minority residents to something else.
I have another friendly amendment to remove the sentence about the library. Uh, I feel like all communities have their own libraries and so mentioning.
Yeah.
Our library doesn't seem to fit this proposal.
I will, I'll accept her friendly amendment.
Are are other communities libraries a de facto homeless shelter though?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I guess I've only been to a few and downtown certainly is, but.
Every library attracts homeless people. Including downtown.
All right, I was trying to give the library a.
Okay, so I will, if if I I like the friendly amendment, it's not mine to to accept, though.
Uh, I'm okay with that. I think we get more than a fair share of of needy people in our library.
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with Nicole. I would actually remove that whole line about the library cuz it's it's. We all love it. We all want it. We all, you know, but it's not, it's not a concern for the city of San Diego necessarily.
Obviously.
Kevin, you went mute for some reason, but you're not showing mute.
Can you hear me now?
Still can't hear you.
Maybe I'll leave and come back.
Dude.
Uh, I can hear Kevin.
I think he's gonna call us right back.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Any more amendments, anything you think could string?
You feel like there's a need to call out the lifeguard station as. I'm sorry, is it already in there? Is that what she said? I'm sorry, the lifeguard station benefits the public, benefits public safety, um, all of those points.
We can add something like to the motion with specific callouts in the letter for lifeguard station and. Pier without having to put all of the language in the motion and make it a little tighter.
Okay, understood.
Can you guys hear me now?
That makes me.
Yeah, I think I think.
I mean, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna include it, you know, either way.
Lifeguard stations are person rich people and notorious, you know?
How much?
The lifeguards, they don't, they only rescue affluent white people, right? They don't. Rescue underrepresented people, right? So we don't really, it wouldn't benefit them from a proper lifeguard.
We're we're feeding your family with fish you catch off the pier. You know, that's something that so every social justice warrior can identify with, right?
So I'm sorry, guys, I actually muted myself somehow and I had no idea what you guys were talking about for the last minute, so. I don't know.
I think they're trying to tie in the lifeguard tower with serving other communities. Um, regi- regional, you know, including low income. I mean, the the beach.
Communities of interest, yes.
Broke people don't go to Disneyland. They go to the beach. They go camping. This is the stuff that we did when we were growing up and we're. Dirt poor. We went to the beach. It is everything that was free.
And honestly, I mean, I don't even think we should get this detailed into our motion and let and we should just let Andrea write the the items and. I mean, calling out specific projects like this just kinda is a is a, we're just kind of funneling down. Where we should just make a motion that's really simple and let Andrea's letter speak for. The projects and the the resources that we want to keep on the the radar.
Yeah, Chris, your hand is up.
Yeah, no, I agree with what Tracy's saying cuz I have read this motion like sixteen times and. Think it leads off really well, but then we're watering it down and almost feels like there's some support for the proposal midway through this motion. So I think we should stick with the intro, but then we need something to summarize what what our stance is here, I think, cuz without providing all the examples. I agree with Tracy, we're just, we're gonna lose people with that. So I think the beginning sentence is good. I think the second sentence is is good. I think we need a third sentence that just ties it up and and clearly states what our position is on this. I don't have that language, but that's as far as I go.
I can't see any of it, but I left and rejoined.
Yeah, so Nicole made a friendly amendment to remove the sentence about the library. Which was kind of your secondary sentence anyways, and then our fishing pier provides free substance. That's, I I don't think that's gonna be. I mean, that's one of the things that she can add to her letter.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think, yeah, exactly. It needs to be like. But if you want to put specific things for me to call out in the letter without going into full detail.
Yeah, so I'll just make a quick friendly amendment to remove the fishing pier paragraph.
So basically, everything up until our library.
Yes, keep everything, everything. Chris thinks that there should be a tie, a tie up at that, at the end of the motion, but I'm not exactly sure what. We could really add to it. Maybe Virginia has an an idea.
Yes, I was just looking at their fact sheet and. If I can pull it up again, it says it, they want to direct funding to. Safe and secure parks for people to. Enjoy. Let me just see, I'm gonna close this for a minute.
Wish we had those.
Fact sheet, here it is. Safe and enjoyable parks. These are the three priorities. Secure and convenient places to gather, interact, like walk and roll, and immersive and interactive libraries. So. If you want to tie what we're saying into their priorities, that would be a place to start for your closing.
And I really think that that last line that Kevin has is perfect. Needs benefiting historically underrepresented residents are not necessarily located in. Communities in concern. I mean, I honestly think that that's all we need to say.
Yeah. Cuz that's our whole point, you know, everyone uses the beaches and just because it's not technically in a community of concern doesn't mean it doesn't benefit. Every San Diego.
I would say, I would say something like therefore, sort of as a last sentence, so therefore. Um, you know, therefore amenities like the the pier or the lifeguard tower. I mean, something that brings it back to our community. In some way, therefore, these projects should remain a priority, something like that.
And Brad just said it. Everyone, that line believed it to be in there. Everyone uses the beaches.
Yeah, well, and I.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Put that, but do we think that needs to be included in the motion or?
Absolutely.
I do, yeah.
I don't know, I don't think we need to call anything out in particular about, I mean, I think her letter.
Not particular items infrastructure, but just in the motion. Andreas, Andreas.
Damn it, what the fuck?
Craig's cutting out.
Did you get that?
No.
Okay, everyone uses the beaches. Including members of communities of concern.
Everyone uses the beaches, including members of. Communities of. Concern. Um, okay, I'm gonna read this back. This is kind of like tail tailgating or adding on to Kevin's emotion emotion. His emotion. Um, the city should continue to prioritize diff spending based in part on infrastructure condition. And amenities that serve residents from all over the city, particularly low income residents from any community. Needs benefiting historically underrepresented residents are not necessarily located in communities of concern. Everyone uses the beaches, including members of communities of concern.
I would add, I would add, everyone uses the beaches and related amenities, including, you know, whatever, so cuz beaches just sounds like, what are we talking about? I say beaches and related amenities. That includes the pier, the lifeguard tower, whatever.
Amenities.
If Craig's agreeable to that or Kevin's agreeable to that.
I don't even think we have a good motion right now. We've got the weirdest motion amenities. How the hell do you spell amenities?
It's further up in the in the motion.
Including members.
I would say residents.
Yeah, residents. Of all communities of concern. Okay, so the last statement would be, everyone uses the beaches and related amenities. Including residents of all communities of concern. I don't know if we really need to like duplicate communities of concern twice, but I just put it in the chat. So you guys can read it for yourself and let me know.
If you don't wanna use that same verbiage twice, it's also referred to as San Diego's promise zone, I believe.
Residents of. Promise zones, zone areas. Promise zones. I don't know, what do you guys, what do you guys think? How how should we change that?
Well, communities of concern is big language they use, yeah. Do they?
I mean, I don't even, I don't even have a problem with saying like, including all residents of the city of San Diego. Like boom, like it is all residents of the city of San Diego, not just the communities of concern.
Agreed.
Only disadvantaged communities.
Everyone uses the beaches and related amenities, including residents of all disadvantaged communities?
Historically, is it?
Traditionally disadvantaged.
Of, they used historically all, and so historically. Communities. All right, one more time in the chat. I love how we make motions around here. Okay, what do you guys think?
If this is the mode, I second the motion. I think it looks good.
Okay, so we're gonna give this motion to Kevin.
I was on mute here.
Yeah, we're gonna give this motion to Kevin since he like.
No, I don't like that last line at all, that the, I would say, for example.
I cannot, yeah, the last line I can just put into my letter and like it does make the, you know, I will, I mean, I'm obviously gonna put it in. And it just adds a little bit to the motion, you know?
Yeah, I mean, honest, again, seriously, I don't think we need this last line. I really don't. If Andrea's gonna write a letter. That's gonna express all of this stuff, we don't really need this last line. This is kinda like, this is kinda like giving them the finger. I mean, I really, I think it's like giving them the finger. It's like, and by the way, man in it, so I mean. These politicians.
Basically, the jet lag might be kicking in a little bit.
Yeah.
I think it's okay, but anyway, sorry, I cut somebody out.
These politicians treat the beach communities like garbage. Because we're, we live at the beach. We don't need any help. We're we're gonna all sort out. I mean, the beach is a huge resource, a free resource. For low income people. That's why we're always.
San Diego beaches bring people to the city. They know that. They need to spend money there, period.
Yeah, so my last line would be, for example, the beaches and related amenities. Are a free resource or a popular free resource for. All of our low income residents.
But they also attract money from out of the area.
Yeah, but that's enough.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be the thing that gets the city council excited.
Those people are coming regardless.
Income residents.
They may not come back, but they'll they'll come regardless.
Okay. I'm fine with leaving this 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 last line if everybody else is digging it, but can we, can we finalize this motion and move on?
Take the last line out and I I I wanna give Andrea some editorial discretion. To tie in some of our specific projects.
I'm gonna copy and paste this whole thing into sticky note.
But Chris was saying that he likes the last line, so.
Too bad, it's not his motion and I reject. Let's get this over.
I'm taking the last line out.
It's your purview. Funny enough, though, we're saying similarly, I mean, you're saying, for example, we're adding this other language, but I, you know, it's. If Andrea can throw it in her letter, cuz I think we're just trying to show some examples, right? We're just trying to say, these are the amenities that do require traditional support as it's, you know, as it's been thus far.
Get a really short sentence at the end that says everyone uses the beach and its amenities, period.
I think I think Andrea can put that in her letter. I don't think this needs to be part of the motion, so.
She's got some discretion to, she she will give a shout out to our beach and and pier.
Okay, Kevin, so are you okay with what's in the chat right now?
Yeah, minus the, oh, yeah, yeah, that that's my.
Okay, and did someone second this or will I go ahead and second this for you?
I think Chris did, if he's still okay with it.
I'll second this. Let's get this move on.
Chris, are you okay with the way it is now?
Yes.
Seconded, yeah.
All right.
He's okay.
Anybody not in favor?
Will you call the role for this one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or Stephanie, she's like, is this how this shit always happens? Like, no, no, this is not how this shit always happens.
Yes, it is.
No. Don't listen to Richard. But I tell you what, man, sometimes our motions get weird. Okay. It's like motion by.
Community at work here.
Yeah, motion by group think. Okay, uh, so Susan, since you are the fir- the 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 latest added. I'm gonna call your name first. Do you vote yes or no on this motion? And you have to unmute yourself.
You mean Stephanie?
Or yeah, Stephanie, what did I say?
You said Susan.
Oh, God, sorry, Susan.
Sorry, Stephanie. You're jet lagged.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, Chris.
Yes.
Anthony is absent. I vote yes. Tom.
Yes.
Kevin. Yes, Craig.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Virginia.
Yes.
Is that it? I think that's it, yeah, we're good, alright.
Alright, cool, uh, so according to some new state legislation, we need to vote. Each meeting whether we want to go back to in person or if we wanna stay virtual and uh, state our reasoning for such. So. Does someone have a motion for either way for next month's meeting? May sixth, May seventh?
I don't have a motion, but I do know that a lot of public entities are going back live. Um, my concern is, do we have a location?
Uh, I know that the rec center is still op- open, I would have to double check whether their hours have been reextended to nine. I know as of right now, they're ju- like, last time I spoke to them, it was eight.
Is there a requirement that we hold a potential of three hour long meetings?
No, I don't.
It depends on how long the motions go for.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean, could we feasibly, um, until the rec center gets itself together and. Is able to open until nine, can we do just two hour meetings?
They've always kicked out at eight, haven't they?
No, they kicked out at nine. Um, I, is anyone itching to go back in person, I can check, and then just give me another month to check in with the rec center and maybe then transition by summertime.
I think the in-person meetings are important to a lot of people from the public.
Yeah, okay.
I absolutely agree.
I move to um. Go back to in-person meetings. With or without the um. Nine PM closure.
I will second that motion.
Less work for me. Okay, uh, so Tracy, I would call the roll, or Chris, did you wanna make a comment about?
Well, I, the only comment I have is I, I, I'm fine with that, but I I wanna thank the board and our chair specifically for the sensibility that's occurred in the last. Two years to hold these meetings virtually and to continue to extend them, I think it was the right thing to do. From a health and safety perspective, I think I agree, I don't think I agree, I know I agree with Tracy, a lot of. Agencies are now opening back up and I think to, to Richard's point, it is important for the public. My daughter agrees, so it's time, it's the right time to do it, but um, thank you for the sensibility in these last two years.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, um, and you know, I don't wanna lose any of you guys, you're my best friends. Um, and yeah, we have a great sign that we haven't used at all, okay, okay, uh, call the roll then Tracy.
Alright, um. The hell, man, uh, Stephanie.
And I'll write Chuck, is yes for in person? Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, uh, Chris.
Yes.
Anthony's not here. Uh, I'll vote yes, even though I hate the rec center in the summertime. Uh, Tom.
Yes.
Evan.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yeah.
Nicole.
Yes.
Virginia.
Yes.
Okey dokey, that sounds like a pass.
Awesome, okay, so as far as chair updates go, as y'all know, the budget hearing, like Coda said, budget hearings are going on. So I'm gonna try to um, get you guys dates and if you can call in or leave a public comment just about, you know. Again, reemphasizing the fact that we have, you know, eight and a half million dollars sitting around specifically earmarked for the pier. And we would like that to be budgeted for preliminary engineering structures that go towards rebuilding. Or rebuilding the pier. Um, just, cause that's just sitting there and I don't want the city to either keep sitting on it or budget it for something else. Like, they need to start moving on it, uh, so I will get those dates when I find them. And hopefully we can make a strong show of force, call in, you know, leave your public comment. Uh, and that's, I think that's one of the more uh, pressing issues, it's budget season, so let's get that money. Okay. Uh, that's it, uh, do I have a treasures report, Craig?
Yes, you do, and there's nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and twenty nine cents. And I would uh, request that if anyone has um, any receipts for any uh, expenses incurred. And they'd like to seek reimbursement on any of that, to please get that together and get it to me. Because in about a month, I'm gonna wanna be submitting to the city for reimbursements.
Uh, do we have any other announcements, leaves on reports, Kevin? And then.
Vice Chair report. Uh, there will be a project review committee meeting in two weeks, uh, Wednesday, April twentieth. And reminder, those members are myself, Chris, George, Stephanie and Richard. If there's no projects, I will uh, adjourn that and will deal with any appointments at the um. Next meeting that does have projects. I'm also checking on the Bermuda stairs right now, uh, that's supposed to be. Getting close to construction. I don't know what's taking them so long, it says estimated start uh, September.
So after the summer moratorium.
Yeah, so maybe they'll, they'll get their forms set up in place just in time for the king tides.
Um, alright, I do have one more chair announcement, if you are looking to um. Do an appointment, please email your application to me so that I can agendize that. Uh, that's, again, we have two open seats in D four and D five. Email me, A E, I'll put my thing in the chat, okay, uh, Mandy?
Okay, um, I just wanna let everyone know that um, the community is concerned about some edge lanes that were installed without notice up in Miramasa. And there's been talk that they are proposing to install those along Evergreen and the Point Loma community. So we've extended an invitation out to Everett Hauser, requesting that he come before the community to educate us on what they are and how they work. Um, I have heard just a follow-up that the mayor has halted all installation of those type of mitigations at this time. Just to again, allow more opportunity for community education on how to transit these new designed um, areas in our communities. Um, another thing I wanted to let you all know, um, that our board, we just hosted our election as well. Um, well, it was canceled because we didn't get um, more than five um, candidates and we had five vacancies. Unfortunately, we only, we have one vacancy still because of one of our candidates did not meet the meeting requirements. And so if you know of anyone in the boundary of Point Loma, we are looking to fill that vacancy. Um, they do need to at least um, have attended one meeting in the last cycle um, since the last election. But if you know of anyone who's interested, have them um, come to our next meeting on the twenty first of April. On the third Thursday at six PM, we are still meeting online via Zoom, so you'll just need to go to the website to register for our. Meetings at PCPB.net, but that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any final thing, Tracy or Chris with arts and airport?
Uh, April is Arts and Culture Month. Um, I'm not totally sure what that entails for the city, maybe Chris. Maybe Chris has a brain that works tonight and can talk about.
Arts, Culture and Creativity Month, April, it's a, it's a statewide initiative, the government, uh, the government, the governor supports it, the mayor just did a. A big formal kickoff on Monday and also announced the city of San Diego is gonna do its first ever cultural plan, which is a big deal, arts and culture plan for the city. So we're finally growing up a little bit in that regard, so, yeah, lots of activity happening this month. Google it, you'll see, but a lot of organizations across the region are are um, touting what it means to be an arts and culture or a creative. Uh, sector professional right now, so it's good stuff.
Yeah, the, um, I do know that, you know, a number of members on the commission have been calling for a a cultural plan, a creative cultural plan. The city of San Diego for a very long time and it's actually kinda nice to have a mayor that supports that. Um, you know, we have cultural plan, or we have plans for everything else in this city, you know, we might as well. Have a great creative and cultural plan as well, um, you know, it'll help with planning and whatnot, we all know what plans do. Whatever, oh my god, you guys just need to shut me up, I need food and I need sleep.
Okay, I have one last thing, um, number one, I kinda wanna see the painting that Craig's been working on this entire meeting and number two. Um, that is, Arts and Culture.
Great job.
Funny, Andrea, I have the same thought as well.
Good, thank you for sharing, Craig, and then also uh, another plug for Arts and Culture, the San Diego Art Museum is currently hosting Matisse's for the first time. Ever, so if you have a chance, uh, the third Tuesday of the month is free entry to the museum, so then you would just have to pay the extra exhibit fee. Which I think is like five or ten bucks, so, if you make it out, it'll be there until August, uh, okay, well, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so we voted to, for the full board to meet in person, the subcommittees, they can make that decision on their own?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense to me, you just gotta vote, you just agendize it and vote on it, um, okay, wonderful.
Post, post-agendic public comment, this will be available at the Hodad Surf Contest on April thirtieth.
Alright, awesome, um, yeah, okay, cool, well, thanks everyone, I'll see you in person, I guess, next month. And I will let everyone know, you know, well ahead of time, where we'll be holding that, and I will also try to get those budget hearings out to you. So we can, yeah, again, get that money that's for the pier actually starting to, you know, get a new pier. Okay, thanks everyone, have a great rest of your week.
See you, Andrea.